Let's pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. To this government, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roka?
Jenny David.
Yes, here.
Here.
Ron Vaughn.
Present.
Brad Newbecker. Mark Serber.
Present.
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Missus?
I don't have any. Seems like a pretty long agenda today.
Yeah, I gotta agree. Is there anything, and you got me for two hours, and I think you're all pretty well aware of this at this point in time, is there anything on here? I was pretty surprised opening this. Some of this, I believe, got put on here fairly recent. Is there anything that we're able to move to the next committee of the whole?
All three of those policy matters could be moved. We do want to talk about the surplus auction issue, or it's been an ongoing matter, but the three policy items definitely are not pressing, so they don't have to be. The other items, appointments, frankly, that's up to the speakers, I mean, the sponsors of those, and it looks like those are the most urgent items.
Okay, you're good with that, then. We'll see where we're at timeframe going forward. We really need to stick with it. I know we've discussed a few different times, things being put on our iPad by Monday. Anything that has to go beyond Monday, I think, needs to be moved. Going forward, I think we really need to stick to that plan.
Believe it or not, two items did not make this agenda, so.
I should have taken a look at this and asked to move the meeting up to eight o'clock.
Quite a few. There's quite a few things here. It's like take the whole.
Hopefully, hopefully not, but, okay. Item two, public comment. This is related to agenda items only, three minutes. Is there any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Item three, appointments. Free A, Vicky Rao, related to FFA presentation. Hi, guys. Thank you for coming. You have the floor. Do you need us to move?
Good morning, honorable judges, timekeeper, fellow famers and guests. My name is Addison Curtis and I'm a member of the Oklahoma Heights FFA Agricultural Issues Team. My fellow teammates are Kane Mater, Tatum Newbecker, Lizzie Bragg, Brian Rao, Kirsten Newbecker, and Maui Miller. Our agricultural issues issues, do we really know who owns America's farmland? On the pro side of the argument is Tatum Newbecker, as a local farmer looking to sell the family farm, and Maui Miller as local real estate agent. On the conside is Kane Mater, as a local crop farmer looking to expand his operation, and Lizzie Bragg as a farm bureau representative. Kirsten Newbecker will be a concerned local citizen, Brian Rao will be the restaurant's owner, and I myself will be the restaurant waitress. Two words, American soil. These two words alone for many are commonly used to start patriotic feelings, but honestly, they're words that shouldn't be taken for granted. As many of you may already be aware, Michigan, along with the entire US, is experiencing a growing debate. Many wonder, do we really know who owns American farmland? The answer increasingly is not the American farmer. As farm consolidation continues, farmers aren't the only ones shopping for the land. When billionaires like Farmer Bill purchase American farmland, farmers sigh. But it's not just the billionaires and the huge domestic corporations that farmers need to be concerned about. That's because today, already over 35 million acres of US farmland is held in the hands of foreign investors. The number has doubled in the past two decades alone, which is wide as resting lawn belts for so many in the farming communities. Before we start our skip, we'd like to give you some insight on our issue. According to a February 2027 study by USDA, US had just over 897 million acres devoted to farming in 2019. That may seem like a lot, but in just one year's time, farming acres decreased by 2.1 million acres. Take into consideration that the world's population is expected to increase by 2 billion by 2050, which means we'll have to see more people on fewer acres. With the average age of today's farmer at 59 years of age, many are facing retirement with no prospects of family members wanting to take over the operation, which has led to farms being put into corporate trusts where the rent is sold outright. National Farmers Coalition anticipates that two-thirds of the nation's farmland will change hands in the next few decades alone.
As of January 1st, 2022, billionaire Bill Gates currently owns the most farmland of anyone in the United States. He currently owns 268,984 acres of farmland and another 25,750 acres of transitional land. He currently holds land ownership in 19 states, including Michigan. All 50 states report foreign investment or ownership to some degree in the United States' private agricultural sector. In 2021, the states with the highest number of foreign-owned acres were Maine, Texas, Alabama, Washington, and Michigan. Other states with more than a million foreign-owned acres are Colorado, Arkansas, California, Florida, Georgia, Louisiana, New Mexico, Oklahoma, and Oregon.
Creating safeguards around how much farmland in the US can be owned by foreign corporations is not a new concept. In 1978, the federal government passed Foreign Investment School Act, requiring all foreign entities to report all transactions. Thus, tasking USDA with collecting debt on all agricultural land purchases by foreign investors. But more than four decades later, enforcement of these rules remain on shaky grounds. USDA assessed a few fines and saw many records containing errors and missing information. Understanding of the USDA, competent ownership arrangement, and corporation failure to report the own mistakes are all contributing factors to the remaining lack of debt available on foreign ownership. However, there were multiple times from this issue. In 2017, Senator Chuck Grass introduced a security of national security act to create more accountability to track foreign ownership. However, the bill died for a season congressional vote. Currently, legislation introduced before the 117th Congress seeks to increase oversight on foreign investment and ownership of US agricultural land. Several bills would amend the Defense Production Act of 1950 to include the Secretary of Agriculture as a member on the Committee on Foreign Investment in the United States, or also known as the CFIUS. Currently, USDA is not a member. They're an interagency committee authorized to certain transactions involving foreign investment and real estate transactions by foreign persons. Bills that would include USDA as a member include HR 5490, Foreign Advisory Risk Management, known as the Farm Act, HR 3413S, Agriculture Security Risk Review Act, and S 3089, Food Security's National Security Act of 2021. States also have the power to regulate foreign ownership of their farmland, and 22 states have their own rules. But again, enforcement can be a hit or miss. Recently, Missouri State Governor Doug Beck has renewed a state-level push to ban foreign entities and domestic corporations from buying up Missouri's farmland. The ban was passed in 1978, but amendments tacked on after the fact weakened what was supposed to be a clear-cut rule. Family Farm Action assisted Senator Beck in pushing for these changes in legislation. It would squash the amendments that created the loopholes in the ban. One such amendment allows foreign interests to hold up to 1% of Missouri's farmland if they fall under certain exceptions. Another was added, saying that the reporting of corporate land ownership was no longer required. Only one week after the relaxation requirements were put into place, Chinese-owned pork-producing giant Smithfield purchased over 40,000 acres of Missouri's farmland. Other states are sounding the alarm as well. Iowa, Minnesota, Mississippi, North Dakota, and Hawaii have been foreign ownership of land in their states, while Kansas, Missouri, Oklahoma, Nebraska, and South Dakota have gone a step further, banning corporations, foreign or domestic, from holding a title to farmland. But all these states have exceptions written in their laws. So even though there has been political action to address this global issue, powerful corporations have successfully pushed through line their ownership of farmland in the very laws that are trying to prevent it. Morning, ladies. Welcome to Big Beat. Do you have a table or would you prefer a bar today?
A regular, please.
You got it. Help yourselves. Let me guess, two coffees and two sets of the pie?
Yes, please.
Two coffees and two sets of the pie. Come here.
Free.
Welcome to Big Beat. Would you like a table or would you prefer a bar today?
I'd like a bar, please.
I'd like a table.
All right, if you can have a seat here, and if you can have a seat at the bar, here's some ice. Can I get you something to drink?
Just coffee.
Okay, two coffees, come on up. I'll be right with you. Here's your coffee and pie. Enjoy.
Thank you. Thanks for meeting me. I'm so sure of this here. I have some exciting news and I couldn't wait any longer. No problem. What's this news?
I have two groups that are really interested in purchasing your farm property. Morning, have you decided?
I'll have a coffee and set some apple pie, please. Come on up.
Here's your coffee.
Okay, are you having any luck on finding any farmland? I've had my years over, but I haven't heard anything yet. Really? Already? I thought it would take a while. Is it one of the neighbors?
No, everything I checked into. They all want to sell and not rent. There's no way I can afford what they're being offered for. I can't even come close.
No, there are a couple inquiries on property for a few neighbors, but most are looking at leasing options and not purchasing. I'm sorry, but I couldn't help but overhear your conversation. Did you see that you have some farmland here locally for sale? Kate here might be interested.
Absolutely. I've been trying to increase my operations since my son has decided to stay in the farm. And with another family to support, we need to look at expanding. Would you be open to possibly leasing with the option to buy?
I'm sorry, but I've been down that road before. Honestly, I just want to get out from under this and be done with it. So who's these interested parties and are they serious?
Well, actually, it's nobody local. It's two massive groups that are going head-to-head for your property. As of right now, they're well above your asking price. I'm just waiting for the dust to settle to do press the highest bid.
Really? Wow.
You see, this is what I've been talking about. These investors with deep pockets are grabbing a plot of land. What's a guy like me to do?
Unfortunately, Kate, little guys like us are becoming a thing of the past.
I'm sorry, but what's wrong with investors? When someone sells, we all hope to get the most we can for our property. That's just good business. Congrats, by the way.
Exactly. True, but of course there are some of these investors, especially when you're out of state. You don't know their plans after the property.
That's true.
Exactly. Are they at least farm-related investors? I'm so tired of watching prime farmland get paved over for a shopping mall or another subdivision, or is it going to become another solar or wind farm?
Well, those are all important as well.
Not on prime farmland.
I'm not sure exactly what their intentions are with the property.
I don't want to see my farm turned into a subdivision or shopping mall either, but you have to realize, I'm between a rock and a hard place. I have worked my whole life on this farm with the dream of someday my grandkids taking it over. Unfortunately, that's not their dream. It's gotten to the point where if I wanted to leave them an inheritance of some kind, I have to sell now before all of my equity is gone.
I totally get it. You said investment groups? According to this, there are several foreign investment groups looking to invest in this area. Have you checked to see if there are foreign investors at least? I'm not sure that one might be.
I think a lot of hard about selling to a foreign investment group.
You people need to wake up. China's on the hunt. They made massive boom market plays in the last decade. In 2013, Shanghu International purchased US-based Smithfield Foods. At the time of the sales, Smithfield had 25 sites here in the US, 460 farms, and contracts with 2,100 producers in 12 states. In 2014, China National Cereals purchased two major agricultural trading companies. In 2017, China paid nearly 46 billion in acquisitions of Symbenta, giving them access to crop and food protection products.
China actually owns a very small percentage of the Mid-South land. Well, if it's just a few acres and it's not that big of a deal.
Really? You?
At the start of 2020, they controlled 192,000 acres with $1.9 billion, including land for farming, ranching, and forestry here in the United States.
I'm all for Americans having the first chance of these resources, but when we propose a limit to who can own the land, they're obviously limiting the upside of the current owners.
Well, I have to say, this has me thinking. You know, my family's one of those foreign investors.
What?
We're foreign investors in another country. 35 years ago, my grandparents purchased 120 acres of farmland in Canada from an aging farmer. His sons had no interest in the land, so he's looking for a buyer with the hopes of it staying intact. None of the locals were interested in the land for farming, so my grandparents purchased it as a family vacation spot. My grandparents have rented the land to a local farmer to take the hay off for its cattle. So now you have me thinking. I hope the locals don't think ill of us for being foreign investors in their farmland.
Exactly. So how is someone told to own foreign land, but others are not? Who makes that decision?
The United States currently owns over 9 million acres of farmland in foreign countries like Australia, Canada, and Brazil. I don't hear them complaining. Our family isn't destroying the land or taking its resources.
So who are some of these foreign investors that own land in the US anyways?
Well, just offhand, I can name a few. Canada, the Netherlands, Italy, France, Germany, Europe, and Brazil. Oh, yeah, don't forget China.
The two largest are the Netherlands and Canada. Canada owns the most, with just shy of 7 million acres, and the Netherlands at almost five. Here in Michigan, 1.35 million acres are owned by foreign investors, with 90% of that being forests.
Exactly. I've heard of a couple local farms that have sold out to some Dutch investors. They have allowed the aging farmer to stay on the farm with a life lease on the house, and have kept on all of the farm employees as well. For me, that would be a dream come true.
Should we be allowing countries that we consider our enemies, we owning land and the system here on armed soil? Or should it be countries that we consider a close ally? I think maybe we should take a closer look.
Well, I don't see China letting the US own any farmland there.
I have heard of some foreign investors that are making landlords. It's spelled somewhere terrible. I think people need to beware and do their research before selling.
Well, we're coming to the end of our time here, so before we conclude, we would like to take a minute to review some key points to discuss here today.
Both foreign and corporate ownership is taking farmland out of the hands of the next generation of American farmers.
Pro, farmers are receiving undoubtedly more per acre for their farmland than they would if they sold to local entities.
Con, many are concerned about how much China has over the US as a whole.
Pro, it has made many people become aware of what is going on right under their noses.
Con, many of the crops that are being grown are going overseas to the countries that own the farmland, taking them out of our food supply.
Pro, for many, nothing has changed on the farm's day-to-day operations. The farm is being run as it was prior to the change in ownership.
Con, the extraction of natural resources and wealth from rural communities means that money is not being put back in the communities as it was prior. Pro, US farms and corporations also invest in overseas agricultural farmland, so fair is fair.
Con, inflated land prices are shutting young and be getting farmers out of the market.
Pro, many believe US skirmish should not be involved privately in deals. So what's really at stake? Is foreign and corporate investment in farmland a threat to the American farmer? Or could it be an opportunity for growth? Some think domestic and foreign ownership should be limited, as US farmland is becoming a popular investment opportunity for corporations and wealthy investors. While others believe the government doesn't have the right to interfere in private land use. Just remember, a just food system that works for everyone cannot be achieved if the majority of US farmland is controlled by a few hands.
It's a slippery slope. Should the holding of farmland by any corporation, and especially a foreign corporation, own our most precious resource that cannot be replaced? Do we allow our wealth and natural resources to be extracted to the pockets of someone hundreds, if not thousands, of miles away, leaving the surrounding communities with little to no access to the resources that surround them? All of our rising farmland prices are shutting out US farmers who want to live and work on the land. So it may depend on where your priorities lie, as to which I do want to take. However, it is most important to remember that there is no one-size-fits-all solution, like somebody would like to believe. So I leave you with this food for thought. We must remember, land is a limited, non-renewable resource.
Timekeeper is now coming to their presentation.
Honorable judges, we are now ready to entertain any questions you may have for us.
Sure, leave a lot of questions on the table.
I have a question. I have a question. How much land does the US own in any of these countries?
Honorable judge, answer your question.
Please.
Around 9 million acres.
Total?
Yeah.
Any questions for these guys?
Very good presentation.
Very informative. Very.
Very controversial.
Yes. Who's gonna go to get into government to help change this?
You guys.
No, we're that aging generation that's going to be leaving. So which one of you are going to get involved in government to make these changes?
Hopefully, our presentation here, and I guess the word is.
Okay, understand, you know, nothing happens overnight. It's gonna take years, and it's gonna take you guys to become those changers.
Well, just in this area alone, the amount of smaller farmers that have been have went out of business in the last five years has been substantial. Any questions for these guys in the audience? Any questions on the phone for the FFA members?
We have a question for you guys. Did you guys know that there was that much foreign-owned land here in the United States?
Absolutely not.
Also, we vote Smithfield purchasing all those plants too.
When is your presentation scheduled?
Which state, in the United States, which state has the most land that is owned by foreign? Sure.
Well, Texas has the most amount, and then Hawaii has the highest percentage of foreign-owned land, so.
How much in Texas?
Yeah, it just wouldn't be that high a percentage because there's so much more land there.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
Wow.
But you said in Michigan, most of the land was forest, right? Which is farmland, too. We grow trees.
How much in Michigan was it?
It was 1.35 million.
Is there a specific area in Michigan?
It mostly covers the UP, because with Canada being the largest and owning it, a lot of them are coming down out of Canada and own the land in the upper peninsula.
They're harvesting wood.
Where are you guys at? Have you presented at a local district? Where are you at with the presentation?
We'll go to states next week.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Damesha, do you mind coming on up where they're? Right here. You have a chair.
Sit eye level with us. Don't worry about the wire. How's everybody doing this morning?
Are you okay? There's some running going with that.
Pardon me?
It's old age.
Oh, because I was groaning?
Yes.
Yeah.
I got your email, your letter.
Okay. I'm just gonna read through that real quick. I would just put some of my thoughts down. So, should I begin?
Please, sir.
Okay. The River Inter County Drain Board voted in December, that hearing at the fairgrounds, to continue with the process to add portions of Oklahoma County to the River River Drain. The Oklahoma County Drain Commissioner was precluded from being a voting member of that board because he owns properties in the proposed assessment district. This only pertains to any matters involving assessments, and I've enclosed a letter from the attorney with her opinion on how that works, what I can be involved in when I can't. So, but anything involving assessment, I can't vote on it. On February 3rd, we met in Aranet County. We entered into an agreement with Spicer Group to delineate the drainage district, which is about, we're not exactly sure because that's part of the process, but it's about 25,000 parcels. And we also entered an agreement with Dixon Wright, who is a bond counsel regarding issuance of notes to pay for this. Spicer Group has done delineating the drainage district boundaries, and they will compile a roll of the parcels. There'll be a day review, and the day review is a chance, the people, anybody in the assessment district will be notified of their portion money-wise, and the day review is a chance for them to come and basically complain if they want. If they have a legitimate complaint, the correction will be made right there at the day of review, and they use a what do they call that? That accounting software. It recomputes it right there in the spots. Help me out here.
I don't know what you're talking about.
GIS?
No, not GIS, but anyway. So that's the day of review. And when they want to do that in August, because if there's any appeals to that, they want to put it on their tax roll in December, and if they do in August, that gives them time to do that appeal process, which typically goes fairly fast, so.
But it's got to be decided in September, the end of September, to go on the tax by December 2022, so that doesn't leave a whole lot of time.
Apparently, the appeal process for things like this, they act very quickly. It's not a.
Now, I had a question on this. It says, if a landowner appeals a boundary, it is handled by the circuit court. If a landowner appeals the assessment amount, it is by probate court. Who's gonna pay for that?
I'm not sure.
Does the individual that's appealing this gonna have to pay for it?
Oh, I'll find out. I'll get you an answer. I don't know.
I also had a question. I don't understand this last paragraph.
I know the assessment, if there's any cost to the assessment district, that would be borne by that would just be an additional cost to the assessment district, just like any legal or engineering or anything like that. Go ahead. What's your question?
I don't understand this last paragraph, the legal team, this opinion that they provided, and what you're able to do and not able to do going forward. It says, the drain code does not disqualify an interested drain commissioner, which is you from participating, but then it says, you may serve on the drainage board and participate in future decisions that do not relate to the apportionment of benefits for the drain. Isn't that pretty much everything?
No, not really. Like, the meeting we went to the other day, I voted to enter into an agreement with Spicer Group to do the assessment, the boundaries. I voted on that.
Was there any other options besides Spicer's?
No, but that's kind of their forte, and they've done a lot of them, and I'm very comfortable working with them, so. I mean, you can, you can, there's a lot of people that do it, but Spicer's kind of the go-to around here for that.
They seem to be the interested party in this project.
What do you mean?
But they were definitely present at that meeting that I was at in August, and it definitely seems like there is a project that is in mind, and it almost seems like they had a pretty big part in this, developing this, Oklahoma County, unless I'm.
They're a consultant that we use and part of the whole process. You have people that know what's going on, and we consult them on a regular basis through the whole process. Absolutely.
But they're the ones that are.
The guy that was at that meeting is extremely good at what he does.
He seemed like it. I'm not disagreeing with that, but it seems like they're gonna have a pretty substantial financial benefit in this.
Absolutely, they are.
And it kind of seemed like they're the one that may have been behind sparking this, because to me, it seems like there's a pretty big project
You mean?
that we're gonna hear about in the future.
You mean, they're behind getting Aranet County to do this in the first place? Is that what you're saying?
I definitely think that they play a pretty big hand in this.
They, well, they do, but they have plenty of work. They're not out ambulance chasing.
Right, when you look this up online, they're involved in a lot of this that's coming forward with this drainage district.
They're a big firm. Big firm. This is what they do.
I think what she's getting at is Spicer is already involved in many projects for the state of Michigan.
Many.
Related to this. Greenage districts.
What do you mean, related to that?
Related to this drainage districts that are coming forward. When you do some research online.
You mean like, you mean like like other drains that are involved in the same drainage district?
Correct. Not the same one. I'm saying in other areas.
I guess I don't understand where you're going with this. Like a conflict of interest.
No, it just, they seem to have a pretty big financial gain here.
They do. They're gonna make, it's gonna cost a lot of money to do what they're doing.
It's gonna cost them a lot of money? It's gonna cost Oklahoma County residents a lot of money?
Oklahoma County a lot of money.
Right.
Absolutely. No matter when you do a project like this, there's gonna be an engineering firm, and Spicer Engineering is highly respected, and they all charge basically the same thing. So you gotta hire somebody.
But we didn't do any bids or anything?
No. It's called quality-based selection, so you don't have to get bids.
Input.
Like Dickinson Wright, Bond Counsel, is highly respected. I mean, people from your county, I'm sure, know who Dickinson Wright is, Terry Donnelly. Terry isn't involved anymore as much, but they're highly respected. You hire them, they know what they're doing, you don't have any problems with their services.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, but Oklahoma County residents are the ones that are gonna be paying for this.
Yes.
And this decisions that we're taking out of their hands, and this organization is going to benefit huge financially. Again, I don't disagree with everything you're saying, but.
Absolutely. They're professionals. They're highly educated professionals that have a huge overhead with office staff and stuff, and they have to make money in order to stay in business, and they don't charge any more than anybody else.
How do you know?
Yeah.
Well, what would you like me to do, I guess? Would you like me to?
Anything else, commissioners. Let's get some other opinions.
The only thing I'll say about that is everybody's highly respected until they're not. So just to say that is not making me feel comfortable.
Well, what would you like me to do? What would be your alternative, I guess? Would you like me to solicit bids from somebody else?
That's what we do.
Well, you're not required to do that. I we got together as a board, and we entered into an engagement letter with Spicer Group, so that's a done deal. For as far as putting together this assessment district. If you, as a board. If you, as a board, would like me to, I'm kinda at your, at your discretion here. If you would like me to go to the board and say, I want to get bids on putting together the assessment roll, as far as what everybody pays, I'll be, I'll do that. I don't think they're gonna do it, but I'll be happy to do it.
Mr. Seruk.
Mike, you know, um, once they make a determination in the assessment district.
The boundaries are?
Yeah. Once they decide what parcels are gonna be included. Do they, on the assessment, is it by the amount of land you own, or does everybody pay the same amount, same assessment?
No, it'll be, uh, that will be part of the, part of the recommendation that Spicer does for us, cuz that's, you know, again, that's what they do. We don't have to necessarily adopt their recommendations, but it's, it's assessed according to benefits received.
Okay.
So, sometimes if you have a larger area, you might pay more.
Right. Because I know, I know in some special, some special assessment districts, everybody pays the same, no matter how much property they own. So I was just curious as to, so they're gonna judge it by the benefit that you're gonna receive as property owner?
That's the criteria used. Benefits received, so, and you have to make it because they have this day review, and people come and say, why am I paying this, and my neighbor's got the same acreage as I have, and he's paying this?
Right.
So you have to make it dependable, you know? And, uh, for instance, on lake levels, if we put in a, in a lake level where we have a dam and the county controls the lake level, typically, if you live on the water, you pay a factor of one. If you live on a backlot with, with lake access, you pay a factor of point five. But that's up to the drain commissioner to decide that. Once you come up with a, a portion amount for your county, your county has to contribute X amount of dollars. It's up to the drain commissioner to decide who pays what. And then you have a day review.
Right.
And people can come and, and complain, or whatever they wanna do.
Property taxes, or a review kind of thing, so.
Similar to that, yes.
Right.
Yeah.
This is circuit court and probate court.
If you, if you wanna appeal what?
If you wanna appeal.
The decision that they make. You go in and make the argument.
And why they do it that way? That's just the way it's done for inter-county drains?
So you said the drain commissioner. So are you gonna be the one that's going to make these decisions for Oklahoma County residents if they come in?
No.
So you can't have, this is part of this?
It'll be, uh, Terry Walters from Glavine County.
Okay.
I will be there, but I don't think I'll be the one that makes the decision, cuz it has to do with apportionment.
Because you'll have, you'll be disqualified to the, okay. Commissioner Scott?
Well, as far as the, the engineering, I would be surprised if they did put it out for bid, if they get any more bids than Spicer. You know, Wade Trims, another major Michigan engineering firm, and they'll probably have a specialty of their own. I would be surprised still bid against them in this, because Spicer does the drain stuff, among other things. And that's private business, and that's gonna, who wants to bid anything? But just what this last topic was talking about, where, where do you set on, on, should it be a flat assessment per parcel? Should it be a unit based on acreage? Should it be, uh, on the water, but a difference than off the water, or?
That, that's something we'll, we'll talk in depth about still, but typically, the closer you are to the improvements, which in this case are in Aranet County, I don't think that's, that's kind of a moot point here, because everybody, nobody's close to it. So it's probably gonna be, a lot of times, if you have a mix and balance description, X amount of acres equals one factor. So you got two hundred acres, X amount, every hundred acres equals one, one factor. So, uh, that's, we haven't figured that out yet. We're waiting to see what, we'll wait until the assessment rolls down, so we can see what the dollar amounts are. And then we'll go from there.
You think you'll have input on it, even though that you cannot be in the decision-making part of it?
Oh, absolutely. Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Van?
Well, up in, up in the north end, the rec area, that's owned by the state of Michigan. They gonna pay into this?
They don't have to.
They don't have to.
Of the way they made.
Of course. No, what I got out of the meeting that Jenny and Brad and I went to, Spicer, it looked like they're the ones that built the fire underneath Aranet to get the storm. That, that's what I got out of that meeting.
No, I don't, I don't think that's true, cuz I'm sure that, I'm sure that Larry, the drain commissioner, I'm sure he talked to them about it, because it's, it's becoming a, this, this whole thing started in, I don't know, two thousand twelve, and was amended in two thousand seventeen. It's becoming more and more prevalent around the state. A lot of counties have noticed now. Until the last ten years, you couldn't do it. So it's becoming more and more prevalent. And I'm sure somebody put the bug in Larry Davis's butt to, to do this. Then he probably talked to Stacy, the attorney, and he probably talked to Ron Hanson at Spicer, and, yeah.
I, I think that was my point, and more and more counties are doing this. I mean, you can follow it right online, and Spicer seems to be the one that is everywhere. And I'm gonna agree with, that's what I was trying to say, Ron. It does seem like out of the most financial gain, it does seem to be this Spicer that is going to gain the most financially. So that raises a lot of red flags to me.
And I, and I don't think it's fair that, like myself, I live up by Lupton. I live by the rec. I have just a lot where my house sits. I sure nailed, I wanna pay the tax that somebody that owns five thousand acres down along the river pays.
Hey, easy tiger. I mean, that's my concern. My family owns a lot of acres. Are they gonna have to pay more money? Why?
Well, what is it fair for somebody just to have a lot to pay the same as?
Farmers always have to pay more. Commissioner Nubaker?
Well, I don't necessarily think that Spicer's the only one that's benefiting from those. I mean, obviously, the state of Michigan's got plenty of projects going on, on their, on their website with this, and Michael Gregg is chairman of the board of many of these committees or boards.
There's two of them. He's, he's, there's only two people that chair all the boards. There's a lot of them.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I don't know a lot about it, but it just seems like it's a, some sort of an extension of, uh.
Good old boys, eh?
Trying to build up our roads and our bridges and our infrastructure, infrastructure all over the state of Michigan.
Well, I, I can tell you from past experience, if Spicer handles this, you're not gonna have any problems. Appeals. So, granted, there's a lot of consulting firms in the state of Michigan. I mean, northern Michigan, not so many, but you get down south, there's a lot of, cuz there's a lot of municipal work going on constantly. So, that's what these people do for a living, and they're paid accordingly. They're all engineers with advanced degrees, and I don't know what they charge an hour. I mean, they're up to about two hundred bucks an hour now, probably, so. It costs a lot of money to do stuff like this.
Tim, you have quite a bit of experience. Can you give any, can you give your insight, please?
Well, I can say I'm bothered at the thought that only Spicer was considered for this, because I know there are a lot of other firms in the state. I don't know if they'd be interested in the work. Unless you ask, you don't know. And, and the idea behind the competitive bid, not only do you get, obviously, pricing that will be at the top of your list, but are there other firms out there that are more qualified than Spicer to do that work, and will they do it for less money? You've not had the opportunity to make that review, so it's, to me, you know, potentially an opportunity missed. And I'm not suggesting, my experience with Spicer is exactly what yours is, that they're a great firm. And I don't want my comment to come off as being, that anybody's being unscrupulous. But part of the idea of going out for bids on these projects is you don't end up at a situation where there is wrongdoing, where there is price fixing or something, because we know we're gonna get the bid, we're gonna charge a little bit more for it. You wanna avoid that, and the only way to do that is to get the competitive bid.
Well, we've got a, we got a bid from Spicer, a dollar amount to do this. So they're, they're tied, they are, uh, tied into that.
I hope it's more than just a dollar amount. I hope there's a list of, you know, work products that you're gonna see from it, which I'm confident there are.
We do. I have that, actually. It's what their engagement letter, what they're gonna do for that, for that.
But the idea that, you know, firm B never had an opportunity.
I'll certainly pass that along to the board.
That's, that's frankly, it's just a standard best practice everywhere. It's not just for drain projects, for everything.
Is that public knowledge? Can they see that bid that you're talking about?
I have it right here. We, uh, we actually, and I've been the, I've been in office since eighty-three, and I haven't been involved in a lot of projects, but quite a few, and we've never taken bids on any consulting firms since I've been in office, so.
I've only been doing this since eighty-four, and I almost always.
I got more experience than you do.
That's doing your checks and balances. I mean.
I understand. I understand what you're saying, but, uh, but it's not uncommon to do quality-based selection. It's just, you get somebody that you're, you're used.
You're comfortable with.
You're used to dealing with. They do a good job, and you know all the people that work there, and they're competitive in their rates.
How do you know?
Well, because, I don't, I guess.
Well, now, we did reach out to our legal team and ask them for a, a opinion on this, and I don't think we've heard back yet.
No.
I'm sure Mike will tell you the same thing. This is a very complex system, and in one of the conversations Mike and I had, at this point, it's, it's a done deal, and once these projects get going, literally, the drain commissioners, in this case, the inter-county drain, becomes sort of its own municipality. They're calling the shots on everything. And it's, it's just unfortunate that frustration's been there for decades. I don't know how to fix that.
But we still, to the residents, to get an illegal opinion.
Right. Yeah.
One, one more question. You said you have a dollar amount, Spicer? When did you get that?
When?
Yeah.
Uh, we, when we entered into that agreement on the third of February.
What is that, now?
Did they, when did they start preparing that bid?
You want me to make some copy of this real quick and give it to you?
Please.
Well, yeah, I'd like that, but.
I do.
Working on this bid, because that was a question at our meeting as to what kind of money.
I think just, I think just this here is all they need right now. So, well, maybe the first two pages. But this is the only thing that, the engagement letter right here, so.
One of the questions at that meeting was, if Spicer was already involved, and if they were already putting together a bid for the project that they had in mind, and at that time, I believe they stated that they had no project in mind.
Well, they didn't, I don't think they spent a lot of time on it, uh, until after the December meeting, to make sure it was gonna, there's no point in them going forward with it, till they know that there's gonna be a drainage board, but, uh.
So they had an idea of what they were gonna do.
Yeah, absolutely. Sure. I mean, this has been going on for a well over a year, and I know that Spicer, the people that work there, I network with them, and anytime I got a question, I call them, and they give me advice. You know, there's no fee for it or anything like that, so. But same way with the attorneys. Like you say, you get comfortable with them. There's a reason you get comfortable with them, cuz they take care of business.
It's not a good way to, to do business.
Well, that's an opinion.
It is.
Well, whose money are you using? Yours?
I understand. Well, part of it's mine. I have a bunch of rental property, so I'm paying just like everybody else. Tim, would you touch on the, uh, I didn't say anything about that, but part of this, part of this project is gonna be updating the G I S for the county, and the benefit that's gonna be.
The work part of the G I S component, the mapping, if you will, that goes into this, and it's intense. They will go through and do, you know, topographic mapping. They'll likely do soil work. Obviously, all the parcel work will be involved. Many different layers of data that will go into that project. The district will share that information with Oklahoma County, so literally, we'll get a data dump. All of that data will be available, city equalization, order, the planning and zoning, if they have use for it, that will be accessible to everybody that way. Randy will be here, probably in the next few meetings to talk about G I S contracts. And this will definitely play into what will then be able to be made available, not only to officials, but to the public at large. And then there is value to that, no question.
Right. And that's gonna be all incorporated into the project.
Some of the work that they'll do will involve aerial photos, and when they do the topographic mapping, I think they've got that down to margin of error of something like six inches.
Yeah.
Which is incredible. We used to say, you know, if you're within ten feet, we're, we're good. Six inches is pretty good. Now, will anybody ever have need for that level of detail? Who knows? But if there is, uh, later on, a sewer or water infrastructure project that goes into play, that data will be very valuable.
Commissioner Seruk, did you have something?
No.
I thought you did.
No, I just, I, I'm just reading this, and I'm really impressed they're gonna do it later. Just lie over Verneck and, oh.
Does the inter-county drainage district own land?
Do they own land? What do you mean, do they own?
I'm just trying to make sense of this, um, part of your letter there. It says, the attorney, or I'm sorry, this is on Michigan.gov. It says, the Attorney General has given the opinion that lands owned by an inter-county drainage district, which are used for drain purposes, are exempt from property taxes.
I'm not sure. I'm not, I don't understand that. I'll find out. Land owned by inter-county drainage district? I don't know. Good question. I have no idea.
Well, it'd be a government entity. They don't pay property taxes.
They did. They had to say that, so.
They do. The, there'll be an assessment.
More tax money being paid back.
There'll be an assessment. Part of this assessment, there'll be an assessment for county roads. M dot will pay an assessment. Municipalities will pay an assessment at large for public health.
Yeah.
So.
Those take money out of one pocket.
Public roads, it's based on their sixty-six-foot easements, land in the district. And that'll be up to the county commissioners, whether they wanna build, they can build a road commission fifty percent of it. I think that's how that works. I don't know the exact formula.
It's up to the.
County commissioners.
County commissioners. I tell that, or the drain commissioner?
No, the, the county will, the county will be billed for it, and it's up to the county commissioners to decide whether they wanna pay road commission to pay for half of it.
Boy.
That's a, I don't know what the fifty-one A or something like that, they call it. Again, they don't know for sure, but about twenty-five thousand. And Ron, way up where you're at, I wouldn't get too worried, because it's probably gonna be, the initial one might be a little higher, because all this expense is being incurred, but after that, might be like, maybe a dollar a year. Sometimes it might not be anything. There'll always be an assessment roll. Some years it might be zero, but there'll always be a line on them on your taxes, but some year it might be zero.
Commissioner Nubaker, did you have something? Thank you, Mr. Demacia. Thanks for the update.
You're welcome.
Continue to keep us updated.
I will. So, there was a couple of questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Get a chance to write them down. Somebody asked me a question. I didn't know the answer to it. Was it you about who, who pays for the appeals?
Yep. You've got circuit court and probate court on here. That is one question I'm sure we're gonna be getting from our constituents at these township meetings.
Be honest with you, when, when they get their assessment, it's not gonna be worth appealing. I don't, in my opinion, I don't think. So we'll see, we'll find out. But most, most cases, it's not gonna be worth it. It's not gonna be worth the appeal, but.
Because, what did you mean by that?
The amount is gonna be so small, it won't be worth it.
But if they don't have to pay it.
Well, are they gonna spend hundreds of dollars on an appeal on it for a ten dollar?
But that's my question. Who's gonna have to pay that hundred dollars?
I will find out. I'll find that out for you.
Other questions that he could take back was, was also the bidding process.
Yeah. I'll, I'll bring, I'll, I'll ask them about that, and I will let you know what their response is.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Have a good day.
I'm going for coffee with Craig's buddy now.
You're up next. Hi, Mr. Demacia.
See ya. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Phil Durst. Penny Paya. Penny is the new director of the Oklahoma E D C. Penny, I believe you got her bio. So she comes to us, not only qualifications.
Thanks, Ron.
Uh, she comes to us with enthusiasm and uh, and we're very pleased to have her onboard as our new Ogma EDC director. At our January meeting, the board elected officers for twenty-twenty-two. I was elected as a president. The vice president is Rich Castle, he's with Consumers Energy, they know Rich. Our treasurer is Ray Stover, president of Michigan, my Michigan Health. And our secretary is Elizabeth Grabo. Of course, Commissioner David sits on our, our board as well, and we appreciate that very much. Just a couple of, of things, uh, and I'll, we'll be glad to answer questions, but I know your time is, is been taken up quite a bit this morning. A couple of things that I wanna mention to you, though, is that we have a revolving loan fund. We are right now in our, our, our first application period for revolving loan. We got a, a grant from USDA Real Development that funded the primary portion of that. We also have some, some small donations, three thousand dollars, not being small. So, but compared to ninety-five thousand dollars, uh, some, some lower donations that, that also have been added to that. Uh, we will keep looking to add to our pool. We have a pool right now of a hundred fifteen thousand dollars to make business loans. And these business loans are, are for anybody, so right now, we're in application period. We anticipate having four application periods a year. So, uh, the, the pool obviously determines how much we can loan out, because we can't loan out more than we have. And I just wanna say that ARPA funds could be applied to our revolving loan fund pool, which benefits business development in the county, throughout the county. And so we, we, I do want to encourage you to consider that as an ARPA um, fund use. Speaking of ARPA, we are, MSU Extension is working with the EDC to have a ARPA session on March the ninth. Next Wednesday, March ninth, we're having two sessions actually, one in the morning, eight to nine-thirty, and one in the afternoon from.
Five thirty to seven.
Five thirty to seven. Uh, the, the, the same session, it's just giving people two options. We bet, the evening session will also be available online, virtual. So, uh, this is a, uh, just opportunity to understand the rules about ARPA and to facilitate discussion. Uh, we hope to be able to help townships work together on things. Frankly, you know, this, the issues that, that many are interested in don't end in township lines. And, and we want to help townships work together and to coordinate those efforts and to help them in this. So, um, Penny, would you like to say anything? Because I dominated so far.
No, you're fine. Just that with the um, ARPA sessions, we are doing RSVP. They're going to be located at the Michigan Works Office, so we can take advantage of some of the technology that we have there. So, you can just RSVP if you're interested in going. You can email me and let me know, and I'll add you to the list. And let me know if you wanna come to the evening session, and we'll prefer virtual, and I'll make sure that you get that link.
Okay.
Are there any questions that any of you have? Oh, uh, there was one other thing, uh, that was the reappointment of Joe Carrera. Uh, Joe is the superintendent of Woodmore Prescott Schools. Joe's appointment was apparently um, up in December, and um, speaking, and um, so we asked for a reappointment of Joe Carr.
That was one of the two items that got put on the next Cal meeting.
Okay. Tim sent this, forwarded this to all the townships.
Great.
It was a repeat, but that's okay, or preparing everybody with it.
That's exactly right.
Absolutely. And um, our website is now up to date, so all the information for this, as well as the revolving loan fund is.
I copied the road commission that, I attended their meeting yesterday.
Thank you.
Told them about it, because they're trying to do the same thing as that or ARPA ones.
The Ogma EDC is, is truly working to help businesses in this county. And just, we, we appreciate the privilege doing that. We do it, by the way, a lot less than two hundred dollars an hour. Because we're a volunteer board. Obviously, our director is not volunteer, but we're a volunteer board, and just remind you that. That's what makes this county great, is, is, is volunteerism in this county. Anything else? Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here, and for the time, it's good to see you all. And um, please don't hesitate to contact myself or Penny about any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Item three D, Randy Booth, equalization director, related to re, remonumentation contracts.
Randy's not here, uh, but he did send uh, requests to the legal team to prepare the contracts, which are voted under the iPad, so that's, that's what he needed to talk about. Uh, those uh, contracts are usually uh, signed and ready to go uh, by spring, so they can begin their surveying. So, um, I'm sorry Randy isn't here. I assume he submitted these because he felt they were ready.
So, you'll have a discussion with them and see what the plan is?
Yeah, I mean, he may have just bought himself two more weeks, because otherwise it would go on for next week, and I can't tell you that for sure that they're ready.
Okay. Was, was he aware that he was on here for appointments?
He has to be, so.
Okay, perfect. Item three E, we have Brian Gilbert, sheriff, related to vehicle lease option. Hi.
Morning.
How are you guys? Fantastic, thank you.
So, we come up with this idea here for the vehicle replacement. Remember, part of our budget, and what we talked about before was uh, two vehicles for this fiscal year. So this is an option that we wanted to talk to you about, about doing a vehicle lease to offset the cost of one of the two vehicle purchases. So, Deputy Better has done a lot of the research related to this, put together the numbers that you should have received uh, as far as the grants and the lease money that would come from DNR to offset the cost. Should have received my memo that kinda just summarized for talking. Go into the numbers a little better. What this is, is DNR will pay for a lease payment, but they will not pay for a purchase payment. Because the state of Michigan doesn't own a vehicle. They're all leased. Uh, so that's all they do is lease. With that, you know, if we can get basically eleven thousand dollars from them to go towards purchase price of a vehicle, takes that much less money to cover it. At the end of the, the three-year lease, for a dollar, the county owns that vehicle. There is no mileage restrictions, that can be, there's none of that, it's just a, it's a one-time-a-year payment. Well, front costs, as you can see, it's would have to be covered off with equipment and everything, but after that, it just would be yearly payment on it. With that, it's good thing. Like I said, saves county money, always a good thing. Gets us a second vehicle for towing, which is what we're kinda looking for. In the summertime, we're, we got a full boat, and we have a full ORV on the weekends. So, this vehicle will be utilized for that, and then throughout the week, it can be utilized as a normal tow vehicle. Or sheriff can drive it, or whatever. But it can be utilized for that as well. As long as we have that vehicle, the weekends, the, the floor. Stuff that has to be pulled in the rest of time. And the, the nice thing is, is that when those miles, the counter, DNR also pays for the, the gas and the oil maintenance on that vehicle while it's being used as a tow vehicle. Rest of the time, it's just county, it's just like a normal county car, where the county incur the cost. This is an opportunity to get a tow. Uh, the towels right now are rare. And with the exception of these two that are currently available from Bur, Berger Chevrolet. It's gonna be well into twenty-twenty-three before we see the next round of towels. Uh, so this would, this one is available, this twenty-twenty-two tow through Berger. Again, it gives us a second tow vehicle for ORV and for Marine Patrol, for towing those different things needed for the patrol and whatnot. We do have sixty thousand in the three oh one, which is the sheriff's office budget. We did, we, when we put the budget together, we did put it for two vehicle purchases. So we do currently in the budget have money for a vehicle purchase that would go through this program. The questions will come, one, when and if we get the USDA grant opinions back. Uh, those are up the chain to, you know, the higher-ups to make a decision on that. That, you know, once we get a decision whether they're gonna fund the USDA grant, then we'll have to make some decisions as far as the second vehicle, that type of thing. As far as this program, we have the money in the budget. Um, the DNR lease program will give us, you know, some money to offset the cost of just outright purchase. At the end of it, we would own that vehicle.
When you say DNR, do you, do you mean the Marine Grant?
Well, they actually threw the three grants, so we would submit each grant as we submit them.
Right.
Have the lease program, so each grant uh, individually would put a portion to it, so a three-month increments. So Marine, ORV, and the snowmobile would go towards the lease payments.
But how I read that was the Marine Grant is the only one that will allow.
No, no, it's, it's all three.
All three. The ORV, Marine.
Will allow the purchase or the lease of a vehicle, it's just that Marine Grant. The other two just are maintenance on a vehicle. Did I read that wrong?
Uh, maybe.
I read it somewhere.
But yeah, it's, the way it's broke down is, it's actually every four months for each grant, for three hundred dollars per month. For a total of twelve hundred dollars each grant per year. So you're looking at thirty-six hundred dollars per year to go towards that vehicle, excluding plus gas and oil.
Cause there's three grants, correct? The Marine, snowmobile, and ORV. So I thought, I thought the Marine was the only one that would actually.
No.
So I was concerned a five thousand dollar grant, which that grant's typically five thousand dollars. We utilize thirty-six hundred dollars of that. We only have fourteen dot hundred dollars left for wages.
Totally, that's totally, um, the, the vehicle lease is totally separate from wages and stuff.
Right, but it's gotta be taken out of that five thousand. We're only, we're only allowed five thousand dollars.
For that grant, plus it'll pay for extra mileage leases.
That's additional money?
Yes, additional.
Additional money we're gonna receive from the state, or are we still capped at the five thousand?
No, there's no cap.
Let me.
I signed it.
Yeah, we receive and get all the paperwork each year, you know, grant, unless issued five thousand dollars. So let's, let's tag it to, I don't know, Marine, whatever you want. So are you saying that the, there, there will be an additional twelve hundred dollars that will be submitted by the state, so that becomes sixty-two hundred instead of five thousand?
Plus whatever gas and oil that's used while that vehicle being used as a tow vehicle for the.
So they'll pay extra, they'll give us extra money for gas and oil for that vehicle.
For that vehicle as well.
Yeah.
That's, that's kinda why I realized that counties haven't really done that before in the past, and that's why is trying to start utilizing this, because it's more money for the state instead of the county.
And, and Paul, you mentioned sixty thousand dollars in the three oh one budget, but you wouldn't need sixty thousand dollars, because you're only gonna pay for like a quarter of it. Twenty percent or whatever it is.
Should we get the other USDA grants, then that'll be also be utilized for those vehicles.
Right. So, you know, the advantage to doing this is that you don't have the entire cost of the vehicle on a single budget. Here, you can spread it over five or four or whatever.
True, yeah. You're saying, sorry.
Commissioner, Commissioner Scott, go ahead.
Okay, you touch on some points here. I like this lease option, but in order to really do this, we're gonna have to change the culture of how we buy. Because we don't wanna get into a lease purchase on one or two vehicles, and that's it. And then we go back to buying, because now we got four years of payments to make. Question, one question I have, Tim, is if we set up a special account that we take an allotment of this year uh, for forty-four thousand dollars, throw it in this account. The next four years, those payments will come out of that account. And then next year, we, we take whatever we allot for vehicles and throw it in that account. So we just keep drawing our payments out of an account that, because otherwise, if we're gonna the problem I run into is if we cut back on the, on the, we put the money in right now. We know the car is paid for, it's just gonna take four years to do it. Yep. And then next year, whatever we put in, whatever we allot for vehicles, we put in that account again. You know what I'm saying?
That, that's one way that it could be done. Uh, what I, I know some of my colleagues will do, and their budget ears is just, uh, well, we use the sheriff's office as the example. We have a vehicle line in there, instead of beginning the twenty-twenty-three budget process at zero, they're gonna start at at least ten thousand dollars, because we know we have that obligation that's in there.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
And that, we try to do with all the contracts that we have, sometimes more successfully than others. If we know we're gonna have an expense in this area. And we have several multi-year contracts, so that we just have to make sure there'll be budget for that, so it's a discipline. Frankly, starts at the department level through me to eventually the board, make sure those costs are accounted for.
Right.
Because we have.
This year, this year, in year four of this lease, we have now started three more leases.
Right.
So the payment this year is, say, eleven thousand dollars for one car. Next year, we're got two cars on the hook, and we're paying twenty-two thousand dollars. Or if we escalated to more cars, thirty-three, forty-four. By year four, our payment is gonna be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because it's gonna compound. So, my question is, do we start dumping this money into a separate account? So in, in, in four years from now, that account sets at uh, two hundred thousand dollars.
Definitely could set up a separate fund that just addresses vehicles.
See, if we're sixty thousand this year, we dump that into this account. If I just go by four years, that's two hundred and forty thousand will be in that account. Those, and those payments, will those annual payments come out of that, or out of that account? And I know that car is paid for four years now.
Now, thinking broader, just the sheriff's office.
Oh, yeah.
Vehicles like in building and zoning, and we had, you know, equalization had one.
Right.
Any of our vehicles would be eligible for this program, so we could have an e-single fund that deals with vehicle leases, and we do exactly what you say. Make sure that it's funded each year, uh, to the level that's needed, and or, you know, as you said, put the entire amount in there. And that's where it stays until the vehicle is paid off. And then we monitor it, because things happen.
The other question I got on that, no, USDA, will they pay for the leases? Or would they have to purchase the car?
But, and that's kinda one of the things I wonder, the USDA grants in this, or except for.
Okay, um, that's what I'm saying.
Either one of them has a bearing on the other.
Uh, I, but, but we traditionally have used USDA.
Sure.
Okay, for purchases.
Yes, they will go for lease.
They won't.
For the state will only go for a lease and not a purchase.
Okay, so if we change the culture of how we buy vehicles, then we're gonna walk away from USDA grants.
Absolutely not.
No?
Why would we? That's.
Well, because I'm taking all my vehicle money and putting it in an account to pay for leases.
There's nothing saying that we have to keep leasing vehicles either.
No, there's nothing saying that, but if we're gonna, it sounds like a good deal.
It is. Most counties actually do have three, four, half-dozen cars on these three-year leases, and then three years, they just get new and they re.
Then another account that they're buying cars.
Right.
So.
A lot of them, they just, they lease their vehicles.
I get it, I get it, yeah.
No, no. It makes it easier for budgeting, because they know every three years, they're gonna get new cars.
Oh, yeah.
Instead of, well, are we gonna replace this one or not? They know they're gonna replace it.
Well, that's.
So that's.
That's my question on, 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 do we set up a separate account, so we can front-load that money into it? You know, and then we know that we're paying off those vehicles down the road.
Right, we know the money's there and the.
Right.
And that bill will get paid. I totally agree.
And it's not only just for our, our sake, but you can, you can feel in your, in your office, you can feel assured that, that there's a future on buying vehicles.
Right.
And you don't have this crap shoot every time you come here.
Right.
And then, and then. And then, and then on top of that, then maybe somebody will start building some trust between office and commissioner.
Commissioner, did you have to comment?
I, no, the only thing that bothers me is, it's in the, it's just, it's the interest rate. That is crazy. You know, and I, I understand that it is what it is, but my God, you're looking at, you know, six percent interest rate. I, I don't lease vehicles.
Yep.
You know, I mean.
Yeah, when it's all said and done, it's, they're gonna be paid about eight thousand.
That's three.
We're gonna get from.
But for four years.
No, three.
It's for three.
Oh, for three, well, it's six point oh zero.
Yeah.
Four.
Right.
But I mean, that's, when you look at it, it's not like, uh, more, it's, it's simpler interest than that. But. The thing is, 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 uh, uh, it's a trade-off. I think it's a trade-off to, to, for the lease. And that's un, unlimited miles. It's not like the regular lease.
Am I looking at this wrong, I guess? How I read this was, you're gonna be paid for this. Again, I think the lease is a good option, but I'm just wondering how we're gonna pay for this. How I'm looking at this is the Marine, the, we, we get three grants, correct? The snowmobile, ORV, and Marine Grant.
Yep, twelve more dollars each, per year.
Oh, I thought the Marine Grant was five grand.
That's what we're, I'm sorry, this is what we're allowed for this lease.
And how I read it was the ORV and snowmobile, snowmobile grant were just utilized for operating and maintenance, could not be used for purchasing. The Marine could be used for purchasing. So are we looking at combining all of those grants to pay for this vehicle?
No, they're, they're individual grants. Each one will cover a three-month period is what he's got set up.
Okay.
So each grant will have that additional money put in for the lease. So between the three of them, even though two of them overlap, Marine, ORV, each one of those grants individually will pay for that.
That's, that's how the state wants us to break it down.
According to Richard Kennedy, who's in charge of all the DNR grants, I've been in discussions with him on this. Uh, that's how he would like to see it broke down, make it easier for him. If we put in three hundred dollars per month, for four months. So the Marine Grant and four months for the ORV Grant and four months for the snowmobile Grant. Obviously, we're gonna use the Marine ORV more than just four months, but basically, we're gonna get three hundred dollars a month for twelve months out of the year.
So to make sure there's enough funding there for maintenance, for to pay for that individual that's doing it and. How many, do we need another, how many vehicles are over there? Do we need another vehicle? Are we short on vehicles right now over there?
Well, yes and no. I mean, the, the part of the problem would be, one, replacements. So we've got three vehicles that are one fifty or approaching one fifty, so we're gonna look to phase those out as part of the program. Two, when we do get bodies hired here for the two vacancies, we're gonna need an additional cars. Uh, for the extra manpower that's gonna be out there. So it, it's just kind of the program. So make sure we have safe vehicles for the patrol and everything.
Just wanna make sure that this vehicle is going to be primarily used for these, this purchase, this, this purpose.
The purpose of towing.
Absolutely. Marine for the snowmobile, um, and for the ORV, and that should be the primary purpose.
Absolutely. Primary purpose is a toll vehicle. Second, will be utilized as a, as a patrol vehicle. Uh, when it's not being used as a toll, it could be, it can be, it may or may not utilize as a patrol vehicle.
Cause you said, you said weekends, you threw out there weekends. Is that the only time that?
Generally on the weekends, we were running at least Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We're running Marine and ORVs. Um, so we're gonna, we, that's two vehicles. That were hopefully if we get the one USDA grant with the pickup, that'll take care of the one. This vehicle will take care of the, the second. We're hoping to try and keep miles off the normal patrol vehicle fleet. So we don't have vehicles a hundred fifty thousand miles on them out there, a guy is running hard across the county and, you know, if it's a safety issue. They don't make cars like they used to, obviously, and the day is.
Make it better.
Commissioner, did you have something?
Yeah.
I, I, I understand what he's saying and, and, uh. I say, if you can, if you can get the, if, if you can get this lease going program, like Commissioner Scott said. And then also the USDA, um, somehow you're gonna have to split them, split the funding. So that you can cover both these. Again, you know, I, I understand their mileage and whatnot. I, I used one of their vehicles to, when, when I was in the academy to go down to Mount Pleasant. It was pretty atrocious. I think I drove it one time and said, never again. That won't happen. And yeah, you're sending officers out in, out in these vehicles. So they do need to be replaced when they get so many miles on them.
Commissioner, go back there.
Couple of questions, um, so we do use like, use this, um, vehicle for other things. Um, how are you gonna track or, um, are you gonna track the gas and oil used for our purposes versus the towing purposes?
It's logged on.
logged on, yeah.
It, it's on the log, so when he turns in like a Marine log, it has mileage that start and finish. And then when he fuels up, it's under his gas card. So that's how we track and, and do the individual line items for Marine Grants and.
Yeah, that, that's not.
So we do that already, if you will, for the different grants.
And fills up, that's gonna be put under towing.
Yep, it'll be put under the Marine Grant.
Was used for shift before that. I mean, how would we track that?
The deputy then would use it during the week. If he uses it for general patrol, he has a start and ending mileage for that patrol car. And then if, when he fuels up, he or she fuels up, have their own individual car. That portion for that goes under the two fifty nine mileage budget, or gas, fuel, and oil. So that's, that's how we break it down, or how it's shown each, when we get the bill from few, the fuel place, it has the individuals' names on them. Cause they have unique pins. So when we see that, we know, like, when Deputy Better's name comes up on the fuel bill, we know that's Marine Grant.
So it's not tied to the vehicle at all?
No, only the mileage is tied. I mean, we can track the mileage based on who used it. But the gas card is where the cost is, and that's based on the deputy's name and unique pin number. Oh, there's still two fuel cards, right? One for the car and one for the officer, correct or not?
No.
Just one.
Cause there's just one fuel card now? Just one fuel card and what makes it unique is they each have their own pin.
Right.
So when they put their pin in, that identifies as the deputy.
Right.
And when the bill breaks down, it has their name on the bill, and that's how, what we use to put it to the each different budgets. And I, when I was working, there were two cards, one for the car and each officer had a card.
Yep.
So that you knew.
You could drive through different cars in a day and you knew what that officer put it in.
Yeah, now you gotta put it all on your daily. If you guys switch cards, you gotta put it on your daily, cause there's not that option anymore, cause you're in the way to just one card, so.
Did you have more?
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I, I think, uh, the three-year lease or whatever you, you guys wanna go with is, uh, is definitely something to. Look into with all of our vehicles, but we need to be concerned about, uh, how far we're going out with these leases. Uh, because of a mileage that could pass or not pass. I mean, we don't wanna get too extended out on something that we signed a contract on.
That's why, that's why the three-year.
I think the average, um, life expectancy of your vehicles, and not, maybe, maybe not this vehicle, but for patrol vehicles is. What, about three or four years, based on the average mileage that I've been seeing, um.
Where they're.
So you're gonna wanna get rid of them after three or four years anyway.
Well, and see, this is another reason why we wanna go with, start replacing them with Tavos. The resale value on a Tahoe right now is, is crazy. You, you can get. Go online and look at a, a five-year-old Tahoe with two hundred thousand miles on it, and they're still wanting twenty five thousand for it.
Right, but that's gonna change. I mean, gas prices are going through the roof, and there's no end in sight to that, so that is going to change.
That is very true. And that's just that you don't know, but as of current.
That's, that's the thing is, you, I, I wouldn't get too, um. I wouldn't sign these contracts for multiple vehicles each year. I would spread it out, you know, each year, just a couple of vehicles, because what happens if all of a sudden there, there's not a good viable option to lease? And now we gotta buy vehicles to get them replaced.
Right. So it's just very true. It could change at any time.
Tim, do you have, I'm sorry. Tim, do you have any input?
If we just touch on repair and maintenance, what happens with the lease? Is it all out of our pocket?
The, the repairs, it depends on, if we wanna break it down, if, if the vehicle's utilized seventy-five percent of the time for. The grant stuff, and twenty-five percent for general counting, if we put four new tires on it. The county, or the grant will buy three and the county will pay one. I mean, we'll break it down like that.
Since you're asking more of a warranty.
Right, so if you have a, yeah.
Uh, but that's, that's kind of the, the breakdown on it. If, if, if that vehicle's found, you know, if that vehicle is. Used or strictly for the whole week of just pulling a vehicle or pulling a boat, which sometimes happens, you know, over three, four days throughout the week. That, that is all imposed under that grant.
Right, but it comes out of our pocket, it's not something that's picked up by the person who holds the lease, unless.
No, it, it, that all comes out of the county, but, and then it's being reimbursed by the state for that.
Is there a warranty on the vehicle?
Absolutely. There's generally the normal factory warranty.
What do you mean by reimbursed by the state? I thought we're using these grants. There's a set amount we're getting for these grants.
Right, it is, but you have to put in for the reimbursement for those, for this.
On top of what we've already received for that grant? No.
No, no, the Marine Grant has, like, last year was eighty seven hundred, was what we were awarded for the Marine, Marine Grant. So we had budgeted out, and part of that is fuel and gas repairs.
Yep.
Break that down. So at the end of it, we don't get that upfront, we budget it, we're awarded eighty seven hundred. We go through the fiscal year and then we submit for everything. So where we spend the money?
You have to show where you spent that money. In order to reapply for that.
Yep.
You have to spend that money.
So you get the reimbursement, then you apply for the next one. So one year, we might be a little bit higher in repairs, because we had something. There might be a few less hours that were spent out on the lake because of that type of thing, but at the end of the day, we're gonna get that eighty seven hundred dollars.
Well, Tahoe is gonna cost more for gas, for repairs, for tires, for everything.
What about damages?
Damages.
In here.
It'd be just like, as far as that goes, it's like buying it.
It's no different than buying a vehicle.
This is just a payment program.
It's all the.
Program.
That's all this.
Yep. We, when I was working, that's what we did. We'd never bought cars. We'd leased every day, I'll go on a car that we had. We'd leased it to Ford Motor Credit when we were grabbing chrome. Three-year leases on, we owned, paid them the dollar at the end of three-year lease. It worked out really well, so.
We could go to a bank and ask them, they'd give us a three-year pro, three, three-year loan on a car. And what kind of rates would they give us?
The problem with that though is that.
Well, we still get that funding though, that eighty five hundred dollars, if we can find other ways to. Um, nevermind, other ways to spend it.
We, we basically have to show them the, the lease agreement with ally or GM Financial, whoever we end up with. We had to show them that lease, that we are actually leasing that vehicle, is my understanding. And instead of being, you can't purchase, you can't go through a. So moving forward, if, if we do this option, part of the budget building in the different grants will be also the lease line item. So we'll indicate that, so that'll be the.
So then my next question, besides payments and everything else. Say they, they got, they got one in stock, they bring it up here next week, just. Not that they will, but just if they do, are you retiring a car next week?
No.
When are you gonna retire the next car?
My, or our plan is by, at least one by the end of the fiscal year. So rotate one out, maybe two, but moving forward, at least one.
So what are we gonna do with all the equipment that's on that car? We don't sell the cars with equipment on them.
No, the, the equipment is taken off of them. If it can be used for the next car. Like if it was a Tahoe that was taken out and we, we get a Tahoe, we put that equipment back into that.
And if you don't?
And if you don't, then it's stored in the, in the back and.
Until back there right now from the last car? Why are we putting that on some cars?
Because it doesn't, uh, it doesn't fit.
Oh, come on. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Radar tools.
Oh, the radar.
Flashlights fit in another car?
Yeah, the flashlights.
Hundred dollars you got here.
Yeah, for equipment.
Well, that's.
What I'm talking about.
If I can save enough money by putting other stuff in cars, then I can buy more cars.
Right.
All right.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not just trying to be cheap here. I'm trying to get you more vehicles. By spending thirty, uh, twenty-six thousand dollars. Extra on a car, twenty-four eighty-eight, twenty-five thousand, in two cars, I could buy another car.
Here's the problem. It's not a problem. It's actually like forty, forty-five hundred dollars is for a new radio.
Yeah.
Just the cost, that's what the cost is.
But you got one on the car that you just parked.
But, we're, we're, those are old radios.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. If we kept that car as a backup car, that radio isn't old anymore. We'd be using it as a backup. If we keep the car, it's not an old radio. If we get rid of it, it's an old radio.
I think.
Now, wait a minute.
I think the question on the table right now is this vehicle lease. I, I think we, I think we can further discuss this, but just moving forward at this point in time, this vehicle lease option, is this something you guys want to put on? Are you looking for approval now? Are you, for the next meeting?
Well, I mean.
For them to discuss?
This is kind of a time-sensitive thing, because Berger is actually holding.
How many cars are they holding for us?
Right now?
Yeah.
One. But he does have a couple. That's totally up to you guys, but he is, he is basically said, he would hold one until today, and I could, like, know where you guys are thinking. Or what happened.
I got sixty grand.
Would you like this put on for resolution for the next?
But if we get two.
We get a yes. Would you like this put on the next meeting for a resolution?
Well, yeah, but I mean, right now, he's asking one car here, but really, you really want two.
Two for the fiscal year, yes, and the second one. USDA comes back, then we'll come back and discuss.
Sixty thousand in the, in the budget, and you're asking me to spend, you're asking me to spend half that on one car.
I'm sure that we're gonna be discussing here in a few weeks too, so we didn't need to spend all of that on cars, that would be okay.
Why do we wanna spend all of this right now?
I'm sure you do. I think you need to wait, I think you need to wait and see what the USDA grants.
So you do not want this put on for resolution?
Yes, for.
That's what I'm asking.
One vehicle.
You did not give your opinion, so yes or no?
I think you still need to wait.
It's the same price as the twenty-one.
Right.
Now, we wait, what's the price of a twenty-two?
We won't get a twenty, but these are twenty-twos.
Okay.
These are twenty. We've been told that the price going forward is gonna be higher for the Tahoe.
Well, yeah, it will. We're getting twenty-one's price.
Right.
What's twenty-two's price?
About three thousand dollars more.
About three thousand dollars more, so you asked the question, why are we buying more cars now? Cause I can save three thousand dollars. That's my answer. Now, if I can find a way to save a little bit more money by maybe using an old Motorola.
There, there's a lot more to that, Greg, I'll tell you later.
This question has been on my, on my tongue for five years now. About all the equipment that's got taken off cars.
Wait.
But the amount of, but the amount of.
What if we wait?
Commissioner Scott, we're gonna put that, this equipment on the next agenda.
Be if we get.
I'm sorry, you got a time limit, but we're here to discuss a break.
And again, we have an agenda and we have a forum to follow. That is not on there.
Sweeter deal if we go for two. I know, yeah, it would really change the price.
So we have five yeses to put this on for the next.
For one.
For one, for this lease agreement that they came here to ask us about. For the resolution, for the next meeting. Thanks, guys. We have, Tom Spencer, information technology director. Come on down, Tom.
Price is right.
Go ahead. Nobody asked me for a break, so go ahead.
Okay. Uh, basically, when I brought the X-ray repair quotes to the, um, I mean, the whole last time, there was a couple of questions about, you know, versus a machine. Or instead of getting a maintenance plan, just paying for the repair outright, so that's what I did. Uh, I went out and I reached out to Smith's Detection, got a quote for a new machine, basically thirty-three thousand dollars. Um, is the first box, and the second box is, you basically already saw that same information. I do have a question on that though, I, I cannot get a straight answer out of these people. If you go with one or two years, I can include a twenty-five percent discount off the repair. I don't know if that's parts, labor above, I, I have not. I I have not gotten a straight answer out of them and I I keep asking the same question, wording it differently and coming up with basically the same result. Um, box three is a repair option. Number two, basically a thousand dollars to do the evaluation and two hundred and ten dollars an hour for repair and a hundred and eighty five dollars for travel. And I imagine that's not including parts, so. I don't know what you guys want to do with this machine.
Where did it come from?
That I don't know. I didn't ask. I did reach out to our medical examiner's recommendation for it and he's a GE rep and I never heard back. So I think that they're probably proprietary to their machines. And I think that, um, Brian Hart recommended that. Um, I I asked, but I never got a reply and I think it's because it's not a GE machine.
We don't have any idea how much it's gonna cost to fix that machine because we don't know what's wrong with it.
And they won't, they won't tell me anything about the errors that we're getting and I know why. They're not gonna tell us for free. I mean, you're not gonna take your car to a dealership and say, hey, tell me what's wrong with it and it'll take it somewhere else to get it fixed for less money, so.
Well, do you think we could get a diagnostic call there? They could come and give us an idea of what's wrong and how much it's gonna cost to repair it versus jumping to this twenty one, thirty two thousand dollars?
They sure will for repair option number two.
Which is?
Nine ninety nine to quote.
There it is.
Two hundred and ten dollars an hour and.
Five dollars an hour for travel. We should be so, we should all be so lucky to get that amount of money, huh?
I I I know, but say it's something simple. I mean, say.
They won't tell me that information. I sent them the error.
What would you guys like to do? We need to make a decision on this. Or is this machine gonna be part of the discussion with the ARPA?
That was my thought, but.
My thought is for the amount of money I want to charge to look at it, take it back to Roscommon, say thanks.
But you're looking at thirty two thousand dollars. So say it's something simple and.
Lived without it. Is it a necessity now? Is the big question. Is it nice? Yes. Is it a necessity? There's the question.
So what would you like to do? Your opinion?
I don't want to have anything to do with that machine. I don't want to put one diamond to it.
Hey, Commissioner Van?
If if you purchase a new one, will they take that one?
Offer a thousand dollars. I'm sure it's not quoted in here, but in Roscommon's.
It was in.
For a thousand dollars, they would take it.
Correct.
Disposal of existing X-ray machine for Roscommon's quote was a thousand dollars.
I said we saved Roscommon a thousand dollars, but you saved Roscommon.
Commissioner Newbaker, your opinion?
I don't, yeah, I I don't. I don't recommend repairing it and, uh, I I agree with Mark. I think we should, uh, maybe discuss later in the ARPA.
But no.
For right now.
I don't want, I I just leave it alone. Throwing away good money after bed.
Now, during our security meetings, they have given, um, statistics as far as how many weapons I we haven't had a meeting in a while that has been caught with that machine. And it was pretty substantial, the last recall with that. And and I, Mr. Peter, you can probably uh, collaborate that. It was it was a surprising amount of, uh, findings that they found with that machine when it was working.
Correct. And actually not to discriminate, but it was mostly women with purses who had something in the bottom of it that they didn't realize that they had for five, ten years in the bottom of their purse. It was a, it was a pocket knife or something. Yeah. I mean, it was. That's basically what they said. They were catching a lot more things in purses that were at the bottom.
It seemed like it was a couple, couple handguns though.
Oh, yeah.
Commissioner Scott, we're discussing the new machine that he got the estimate from thirty two thousand nine hundred and eighty one dollars or option, uh, two with a service call of nine hundred and ninety nine dollars, two hundred and ten dollars an hour travel, a hundred and eighty five dollars an hour to get a diagnostic on the current one.
Yeah, I'm getting adjusted it.
Do you have an opinion?
Well, it's not being used enough. Yeah, I'm disappointed. I truly. I don't wanna go without it, without one, but at the same time, if they're not gonna use it for everybody, I I don't know why you're spending the money. Very enthusiastic that we were getting that machines from Roscommon. It's bad it didn't work out. But, uh, no, I'm I'm fine with not fixing that one. But if I was assured that they were gonna use a new one, I would say, okay.
I I agree with you and I hate.
Picking and choosing. Too many people not to use it.
Um, I think I think right now as far as a repair existing, I mean, I also hate to not, it wonder if it is something simple and this could be fixed with with fifteen hundred dollars. I I hang on, Karen. For the fifteen hundred dollars, I would hate if this was a simple repair. Um, so is that something that that would never be another question question for the ARPA funds? You know, to to look at a diagnostic versus a a new machine?
It's all fair game for our, all of it.
Roscommon got rid of it for a reason.
I heard Aernach doesn't have one.
You know, just off the top of your head, um, of all the people that you found things on, were they headed to court or were they headed for just general, uh, first floor up? Business?
Going upstairs, courts, logging to clerk's office or clerk's office. I can tell you right now, I don't work down there that much, but it sure is nice when it works. Could be around somebody's purse or there, you not have to sit. Wake out. There's a lot. That's a lot of stuff in there. You have to. Can you go without it? Absolutely.
Actually, my question is, is, you know, to check every single person that comes in here to see the clerk's office or or other other offices on the bottom floor, is that worth, you know, the time that you gotta put into that versus just protecting, um, the stairway so that they can't go up to the courts, um, with all that stuff in their purse?
I I unfortunately, I didn't say the age, I think the whole, they should cover everybody. That he gets abandoned at the park as they can.
They can do that in any business in town too. So you can't protect everything. I'm just trying to say, I'm I'm trying to decipher, um, the the amount of people that were holding up from coming into the building to do this and the fact that we're not even doing it at halftime anyway, um, is it really worth that, uh, I'm trying to think of the word, um, not convenience, but the opposite, uh.
Inconvenience?
Inconvenience of having to come through one door into the building when we could just protect the courts. And, um, I think that's what the whole purpose of that machine was to begin with, was to, uh, protect the courts.
I like the machine. You and I have had this discussion. I like the machine. I I highly in favor of it. I think everybody should go through it. I do. In a minute, Karen. Yep.
Well, I I guess my, it comes back to, you know, if we're gonna have it, then, uh, I would hope that we would actually use it and I don't see that happening already. So do we really need this thing?
It may not be a bad idea to have the, before we make a decision on this, to have the head of security come to our meeting and get his input on it. It would be nice for everybody to hear those statistics like we've heard, um, and possibly give us some feedback. I think they should have some input on this.
Well, regardless, can you just make it mandatory that everybody that comes to the door is checked?
Well, I think we need to ask him versus hearsay, what we've seen of the individual, the head of security, what is happening and why?
If you gotta wait an extra thirty seconds or a minute to get through, oh, well, get to work a few minutes early. I mean. I always.
Every time you leave, every time you come in.
I don't care. I don't care. I show up for half an hour, forty five minutes to everything I go.
Okay with having security, the head of security come into the next meeting? Can we ask him, Tim? Karen, did you have input?
I do, from the Security Committee. Please keep in mind, as you consider replacing this, that the Security Committee did report to the state that we have a metal detector. I don't think it will look good from a security standpoint if we downgrade and get rid of that detector. Since we've already reported to the state, that's part of our security system.
That's information that again, can we ask him to come and report to us?
Good point.
Before we make a decision?
If you guys want to, I can send us to Mike Powers. Uh, he's got some grant money coming down. That's never quick, obviously, but we've already talked about that, but if you want me to send a quote to him, I will.
Please.
Say it's on the radar.
I'd rather have one than not have one. But like, watch, he's been all along. Everybody, everybody gets checked. Nobody goes to an airport gets let go through the thing.
How about we, again, we put this on for him to come and give input as far as, uh, all the guidelines and recommendations and. Thank you. Anything else?
Yep, the TV card. We were talking, Tim and I were talking actually, so with Mid Michigan using the annex building and there used to be a projector and everything over there, um, for presentations and there's some things that happen over there after hours. I put together, uh, basically I took the previous card, same exact card that we got here and updated the quote for it. Um, thirty five hundred sixty one dollars to put a rolling card over there just like this. The Logitech group of microphones and everything so they can do Zoom meetings after hours. Mid Michigan, they kind of spark it off, but I know Ryan's at, he's over there. I'm sure we're probably for PowerPoints and everything, MSU for presentations. I wouldn't mind putting a projector over here, but then it's tied to that wall. Or, you know, this is, you can wheel this around, you can turn it around because there's two sets of tables over there. There's the curtain and the building that need to. Well, that's kind of what sparked it because I don't really wanna drag this over from. I can, but.
It will be just as large as this.
The same exact setup. Um, I think the card is a slightly different brand, but, um, it's the same setup.
This is on the agenda here because it's not a budgeted item. So if you've already agrees to do this, we'll put together a resolution to take that funding out of contingency, which has in excess of twelve thousand in it yet. So plenty there, but there isn't any funding within anybody else's allocation to be for it.
Well, you're looking at renting this, if I read that correctly, that the draft building usage. I mean, having this could increase rental, correct?
It could, but it's certainly in line with where technology is today.
Absolutely.
Almost expected, so.
Questions for Tom? Commissioner Van? Commissioner Newbaker? Commissioner Scott?
Oh, I like this.
I'm good.
Okay, so we'll have that on for the next meeting. We know where the funding is gonna come from. Hey, thanks, Tom. I'll see you at the gym. Mr. Peter. Hi.
So I sent you a massive back of tax amendments. Planning Commission has been working on, um, kind of a, I believe one of those is a brief explanation of those as well too. These will have to be approved by the county commissioners before they can go into effect and I'm here to see if there's any questions.
Wasn't a whole lot. You highlighted of the yellow stuff that was changed, correct?
Um, I had a few of them, yeah. Um, in particular, the the first one, the chapter one, the definitions, that's new. Um, number two, section two point two nine for efficiency dwelling units, that is completely new. Um, three, just a couple of minor changes to the minimum requirements for dwellings outside of manufactured homes. Those were highlighted as well. Point three, sections thirteen point three, fourteen point three are are new or changing existing language. Five, section two point one zero replace C and add D. It's kind of a change and an add as well. Six is new. Seven is, um, replacing what was there with the signs, which that majority of that section is all very news as well too.
Questions, comments? Mr. Scott?
Well, I'm totally involved in all this, uh, on the planning commission. We talked about this in great length, uh, just about every one of these, uh, topics. And some over months, the, uh, the smaller home, that was something we talked about for at least eight months. And basically it's reducing the size of 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 the minimum living space and, uh, but, uh, let me note that the the building is still built to exact. It's not to, uh, it is only really, uh, just reducing the size of the living space. The minimum living space of a home. We were at seven twenty before. Now we're, the tax amendment is four hundred square foot, but the house still has to be built to code. That's electrical, you know, electrical plumbing, drywall. It's the insulation. This is not okay somebody to buy a shed and call it a house. That was something that was, uh, everybody on the on the planning commission agreed wholeheartedly.
Really, in this day and age too, it it kind of helps affordability as well too. Um, a lot of people are looking at those tiny homes, so to speak. They're they're smaller footprints. They're they're more affordable. Um, example would be today, a seven hundred twenty square foot home at a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot to build would be about a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Um, four hundred square foot home for for an individual at a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot would be about sixty thousand, so. It it does make it more affordable. Um, there there is a lot of old cottages here in Oldham County that are four or five hundred square feet as well too, so. It's more or less going back to to kind of that cottage, small footprint. Um, maybe for individuals that want a second home or a cottage or for individual just starting out as well too. It's a more affordable option, but at the same time, um, they'll be safe, they'll be up to code, um, and they'll be taxable as well too. As you, as you've gone through here, I don't know if you've noticed, um, we we, I'm having a particular issue with with people living in campers. This this is, this is a better option for those people, um, because we know, we know it's safe. Regardless of whatever anyone tells you. Recreational vehicles are not designed to live there, so. They cannot, they will not pass building codes, so. This is something that would help those people that that are that are starting, so as well too.
How come the definition of the campground? Why was that important to put in here?
Um, more or less to define the, and and this is more or less from the state and anything with five or more recreational units on it is considered a campground. Um, and I don't know if it was super necessary to put it in there, um, but to kind of define it, um, camping is not defined in our ordinance, um, where campgrounds are typically defined in most urban ordinances. So more more or less just to 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 show people if you have five or more units on a lot, it is basically considered a campground and it's licensing from from the state of Michigan, so.
Commissioner Serber. Commissioner Van? Commissioner Newbaker? So there was nothing in here about the actual, uh, Commissioner Scott had brought to us, the dates were gonna be changed. That I did not see in here. Is that not where this belongs as far as you talked April first to November thirtieth? This, that's not.
They are in. It's in there.
I looked through, maybe it just wasn't highlighted. I didn't read.
It's not highlighted.
But I didn't see it highlighted.
Almost to the, it's on page.
I'm at eleven, fourteen days. I see the fourteen days.
And replace C and add D, section two point one zero. It's after the, where he's got highlighted the mini storage garage is.
Storage on lots continues.
It's the next next page down.
Cause I had some individuals asking about it last night, so I just wanted to make sure.
Do you have it? Cause going through my packet that I printed from the packet I sent you.
I don't have it.
I don't see it.
I had the fourteen.
I see D and the current camping, but I don't see.
Current camping regulations and storage on vacant lots. But there's not the dates. It says.
April first to.
Not in mine. Yeah, I don't, I don't have that.
What page? Well, according to this, it says page ten.
Do you see it?
Oh, uh, here.
I was saying in my.
Oh. Yeah, it's ten. There's page ten.
Next, next one.
December thirty-first.
April first.
Okay, it is there, I'm sorry. I was looking on the next, I was looking at the. Because they asked me to bring this next month, it's approved. They wanted to see this.
That's really the only change for camping. Kind of redesigned it a little bit, make it easier through the whole process. It was, it was confusing on what's allowed on vacant properties, what's allowed on properties with a dwelling on it, so. Kind of split that up a little bit, make it easier to read, and the timeframe is the biggest change, instead of the, the two hundred and seventy of a three hundred and sixty-five day period, which is different for every single camper. The April first to November thirtieth is the type thing that, that we went with. Which is pretty standard for the ordinances that I've read, when they define a timeframe, that's usually the timeframe they define. And I found in my research were probably the most lenient municipality around when it comes to, to campers and camper storage. Most municipalities do not allow them to have that type of timeframe.
Adapting this, is this going to help with some of the areas that are having such an issue with campers?
Yeah, and the biggest issue, I think, with campers is there's a lot of misinformation out there. There's a lot of people that just don't know, and that's the majority of people that we've been seeing at the planning commission, just either weren't aware. That this has been in place since it came up at our meeting last night, since at least nineteen ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven was the last revision, then we were reminded, but well, the inspector said that most of that stuff was in effect even before the last revision. People were coming in, they were complaining about this fourteen day within a thirty day period. That is not changing. We're not doing anything with that at all, and they're screaming at us that, why are you putting this in? Well, it's been in there for thirty years. It's already been in there for thirty years. Why didn't you scream at us thirty years ago? You know?
Is this something that maybe we should be communicating a little bit more before this goes into effect? Like, should we?
All we're putting in effect is taking out two hundred and seventy days.
But, and, and, like you said, there's a lot of people that don't even know half of this stuff.
There, there is, what was it, two months ago, was it our January, December meeting when we had? The giant Facebook post. That had thousands of views on it.
Oh, yeah.
I think throughout the whole process. We, we've, the information has gotten out there. Ten thousand times better than it ever has before. And we, we keep hearing about a lot of that and misinformation, so. I know at least a few months ago, it was a huge contingent on Facebook that was going crazy about it. I know Lake Ogma Association out there, I believe they have a discussion group that's been talking about it for months and months and months, so.
Like they said last night at the meeting, there was quite a few of them concerned about this fourteen days as well, and, and I said, unless you're doing something wrong, or there's not going to be a complaint, you're not going to be bothered.
That's the gist of it. That, one of the biggest complaints we got from individuals is, I think previously, and a lot, most municipalities require permit for that. These individuals want nothing to do with having to get a permit to camp on their own property, so. Really, from an enforcement standpoint, if they're pulling a permit, telling you when they're going to be there and when they're going to leave, that's a little bit more enforceable. I'm dealing with a property here, a property there, but that's not the case, so. That timeframe kind of helps define it, instead of having five hundred campers that. Two hundred, that two hundred and seventy days expires. And actually makes it fair for everybody that has a camper. Now, everybody is, if you're connected well, it's up to April first to November thirtieth. This guy over here isn't different because he didn't start till May fourth, or this guy's not different because he started in October, so. It will help with that.
Okay.
It will help with that.
But you don't go looking for problems. You only respond to problems.
Correct. Now, occasionally, if I see something that's a safety issue, then.
Right.
Then I will. Obviously, I think I feel entitled to do something about it. But generally, for the most part, I'm not driving around looking. Driving in the middle of somebody's ten acre parcel because. I, I got a hot tip, they have a camper back there. More or less complaint driven, so.
So we need this put onto a resolution?
Yes.
Are you guys okay with that? Commissioner Van? Commissioner Newbaker?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Anything else?
See that by us.
Any questions or anything? You guys have my number, you know how to get a hold of me.
You changed your cellphone. I've got the new one. I do now. I do now, but I had to get it. Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks.
Session items. Is there anything on there that you for sure want to hit on today?
I think all of those can go to the next Cal meeting. I'm, I'm kind of nervous because I know what your timetables are, and I've got an idea of how long this closed session is going to take.
I mean, I can, at the five-thirty Cal, we can stay all night long. So unfortunately, I, I wasn't aware that this was going to be quite so lengthy. I would have made different accommodations. So I apologize for that, so. Um, now we need closed sessions.
You want to do.
Correct, but, but we are going to do closed, closed session, correct? So we're going to jump to five public comments. This is for any subject matters, three minutes, please. Public comment in the room. Public comment in the room. Public comment on the phone. A public comment on the phone, we're going to go into closed session, and there will be no business coming out of closed session, correct?
Right.
Isn't there something I have to read here?
There is number six on your pad at the very bottom. You'll see the motion.
Dang it. Where are we here? Item six, you said.
Right.
Yes, I read that last thing. A closed session is scheduled to consult with attorney Timothy Farron about three items of the litigation addressed through the county liability insurance carrier. Do I need to read those?
You don't. If anybody asks, these are what they are. That's next.
I need him. Oh, I'm sorry. I need a motion to enter in a closed session to consult with the county attorney regarding specific pending litigations as permitted under Open Meetings Act. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear him. So we have a motion with support from Commissioner Serbuk. Can we have a roll call vote?
Jenny David, yes. Craig Scott.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbaker.
Yes.
You're going to go into closed session at ten fifty-six.
You, I would suggest that the sheriff be included in that.
Okay. Hi, guys. Thanks for coming. Mr. Farron?
He can. I mean, some of you.
Is Mr. Farron on?
Sure.
He is on?
Not on yet. He should be in a second. Our plan is not otherwise filed. I just got to acknowledge, man, you will be signing in momentarily.
I can't.
Make a motion and we go back into open session.
Support.
All right. Mr. Scott made a motion to come back into session, supported by Mr. Serbuk. A roll call vote.
Ron.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Craig.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Mr. Scott, motions to adjourn. Mr. Serbuk supports.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Tom.